Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth. To my colleagues on council, city staff, city leadership. I called to meeting, called to order the meeting for today, September 19, 2023. And I would ask that my colleagues please vote electronically to note your presence.
Seven members of city council present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Interim City Manager, you have the floor, ma'am.
Good evening. This special call meeting is regarding crime. I'm looking for our main speaker, and for some reason, I don't see Chief Jenkins. Oh, there he is. He's blending in blue. Come right ahead, and the floor is yours, sir.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, interim city manager, city attorney, Ms. White, fellow citizens, to my officials in public safety, and to my fellow police officers, good evening again. So tonight, I'm going to attempt to answer as many questions from the dais, but also from our community in regards to incidents or issues within the city as it relates to not only crime, but specifically gun violence. I'm expecting this and hoping that this will be a robust conversation, that we will not dance around the issue, and that we will take this issue head-on with some sound policies to be put in place to not only address some of the issues that we have currently, but in the future. Before I start, I'd like to make a couple statements. Most recently, the homicide that we had that occurred on Dale Drive, like many of our other homicides, have zero to do with poverty, the lack of education, or anything related to that. Those homicides, in my opinion, were nothing more than domestic terrorism within our city, committed by cowards who lack basic civility and morality for individuals' lives within this city. To shoot indiscriminately into a crowd of people with no intended target shows a lack of care and compassion for our fellow man and for each other. Let's be clear, these crimes are being committed within our city by individuals who look like me against individuals who look like me. This is a problem, and we need to be real with the conversation that we're having. Those individuals who support, these individuals who are targeting our citizens with these willful acts, you are as much responsible for the killing, maiming, and destruction of families within this city. Today, I'm calling on every city leader, state leader, public official, community activist, Black Lives Matter, NAACP, church members, bishops, ministers, you name it, who have a voice within this city to stand up and denounce these actions within this city. Enough is enough. This is not new to Portsmouth. I'm reading a book right now from 1973 that coins the very same thing surrounding this city. Fifty years of the same thing, from policies that were created that helped us get here, but nevertheless, there's still stuff that we are dealing with. I will agree with one of the members of council. It is going to take bold action for us to address some of these issues, but make no mistake about it, what we are experiencing has absolutely nothing to do with the loss of life when you will shoot into a crowd of people like you're fighting a war in Ukraine. It is unacceptable now, it was unacceptable then, and it will be unacceptable in this To the men and women of public safety, specifically the men and women of Portsmouth Police Department, on behalf of the citizens of this city, I say to you, thank you, especially for the ones who remain during the exodus of individuals leaving our department. You show the commitment and dedication to this city for getting the job done. This presentation will not be a presentation of doom and gloom, because we are in the fight. We are making strides within this city. And for anybody that thinks that we're going to stand up here and take darts as if we're not doing anything, you're sadly mistaken. Again, I look for assistance from any and all individuals, partners, whether it be state, local, federal, or individuals within this city to stand with me to address these systemic issues, and I'll move on. Conversation on gun violence. So, now to my members of the media, I want to thank you for your continued partnership with not only reporting the stories, but also reporting those stories in an accurate manner. One of the channels reported to me before these numbers came out that those numbers are inaccurate. One of the, there are actually 29 homicides. The other homicide is a result of an officer-involved shooting, and that number is not reflected in that. It regard, it matters not what the incident was, by definition, it's still a homicide, whether justified or not. So, currently to date, we have 28 homicides by firearm. One homicide by, as a result of a narcotics violation where an individual gave or sold an individual a drug, and that person died as a result. Twenty-six incidents compared to 24 incidents last year this particular time. The incidents, regardless of the amount of individuals that are deceased, count as one incident going towards our numbers reported to the state and reported to the FBI. When you compare our year-to-date numbers for violent crime, and we'll go over a little bit further within the presentation, at this point in time, violent crime-wise, we're at a 1.9% increase compared to where we were last year. Now, as we talk about homicides, often, again, we talk about what these homicides are related to. One of the things that I have to make sure that everyone understands is that these homicides are not always all gang-related. There are some where they, we know that they potentially have a gang nexus, but I am very cautious, and I want my folks that work with me to be cautious with who we label as a gang versus a group. We have to be very conscious not to mislabel individuals based on actions. So, for some of these incidents that have occurred within our city, some of them are by groups of individuals versus gangs. As we go down the list, you will see that some of, the first one we have listed, the first one of the year we have listed as unknown circumstances, the second, based on an altercation with, for an individual. The next one occurred as an altercation that occurred at a bar fight and spilled into the parking lot. The next one, the relationship and the circumstances are unknown. The next two, which we were fortunate enough to make an arrest, were a result of a robbery to two twin brothers. The next one, again, unknown circumstances at this point, but all of the information that we have to date points to that this was a robbery that took place. The next one, again, was a teen party that was attended in Churchland, unauthorized party at an unauthorized venue, and a young man that was visiting our city lost his life. It appears to be a random act where, again, some individuals fired indiscriminately into a crowd and struck this young man. The next one, again, is an altercation that took place between neighbors. The next one is unknown, followed by an altercation, followed by unknown, and then the one that we had on Allen Road with the special needs young adult that was inside of her home where a bullet penetrated her house and struck her, killing her. Random act, person minding their business and lost their life. The next one, again, arrest was made, incident that took place in our Dale's Home section of the city where two individuals were lured to the location for robbery. The next one, it took place at our Wawa parking lot, 1,200 block of Frederick Boulevard, was a narcotics-related homicide. Arrest has been made. The next one was a gunfire relation unknown as to what that relationship was to that individual, but arrest was made. The next one was a fight between known acquaintances where arrest was made, and forgive me, I skipped one. We did have another that occurred where the individuals and the circumstances are unknown. It remains unsolved at this point. The next one, again, was a narcotics-related homicide, followed by a homicide that occurred at one of our local establishments where that individual provided narcotics to an individual, and that person died as a result, and arrest was made. The next two are unknown at this time, followed by an unknown circumstance believed to be a robbery. The next one was an acquaintance fight that took place where an individual lost his life as a result of gunfire, followed by a robbery in our last and most recent where Ms. Atkins lost her life, minding her business, where she lost her life as a result of gunfire. Again, for the, the ones that I'm able to say that are gang-related, when that comes, when that time comes, I would definitely point it out. At this point in time, there is not something that I can say that this particular group or gang is versus this gang. However, we get plenty of information and intel that points to that. However, until that particular group has a conviction in court that labels them as a gang by definition, they are still labeled as a group. That is why it's important for us to work diligently to be able to put these links together based on informations provided, not only from our citizens, but also from previous crimes, to be able to present a solid gang case for those individuals, that as these things become more prevalent, we can point to the fact that they are doing these incidents in the, in the preservation of the gang, which makes for a solid gang case. We're not at that step. I will say, however, it is not without trying. Next slide, these are victims of gunshot wounds from 2018 to 2022. Couple of things I wanted to highlight is our gunshot fire calls for service are down significantly from 2022 to 2023. 2022, we had 1,118 calls that were for gunshots fired versus this year, we are down to 820. Now, let's be honest, some of them could be, there are less people calling, want to be honest, but as a result of information that we receive, that our calls are down. Also, the information as a result to the number of people who have been shot within this city year-to-date, we are down approximately, we are, at this point, we had 170 individuals shot last year, as of right now, we had 115. If our numbers continue to trend as they are right now, and I'm going to leave it like that, I don't, I'm not superstitious, but I'm hopeful that we'll come in under where we have been. Now, we've talked heavily about technology over and over and over again, things that, initiatives that the council has been supportive of, the city manager has been supportive of in getting us technology, and this is one more piece of equipment that we are in the process of rolling out. We've already purchased four of these with additional three that are being rented. Some of them are going in places, and I don't mind telling you, one is going to Southside Gardens. One is going directly in, in front of our, one of our issues that is an ABC store. And we got another issue where individuals take this city as a trash can, rather than putting it where it needs to be. That is still crime. And so, we are actively going after individuals who illegally dump trash within this city. So, once we get the additional four, we will strategically place those as a result of concerts, school events, or wherever we might need them as it relates to crime, to augment the additional cameras that we are purchasing for our closed network that feeds back into our real-time crime center. Now, we talked months and months about ShotSpotter, gunshot detection, things of that nature. We, as a city, did not go with ShotSpotter. We did go with Raven by Flock, which marries up with what we already have. Now, I'll be honest, so everybody understands, ShotSpotter is the Mercedes. We could afford a Honda. They both drive. Understand that. These particular, the way this is triggered is when a shot, a shot is fired, as you will see from the, from the screen, that we will get a triangulation based off of the shots that were fired, and it will pinpoint where that shot most likely came from. With the idea that units that will respond to these calls will look for a crime scene or the individuals responsible for the shooting. You can actually play those shot, sounds to be able to ensure that they are actually gunfire. Those notifications come to our cell phones, along with our notifications for stolen vehicles, for missing persons, for wanted people, any other thing that we set that is based on information provided that is associated with our license plates. One of the things that is important to highlight, as we bring our additional cameras on, when shots are fired within our community, you can search for nearby cameras. It will turn on every one of the cameras in that particular area in hopes of capturing what is going on as officers are responding to that particular area. This is all good stuff that is happening. As we talk about updates with Flock, a couple of things that I want to highlight. Last Friday, right after we had that homicide, we had a stolen vehicle, known acquaintance. In that vehicle, we had a one-year-old child that was in the backseat. Unbeknownst to that individual who was working, the friend that was with him hopped in the driver's seat and stole the vehicle, and then picked up two other individuals. Our detectives were able to take that information and enter it into our Flock system, and that system notified Chesapeake, which they got behind that vehicle within an hour, and were able to capture the individuals, but also, most importantly, recover the child with no harm. We've been able to catch several robberies, including our clown mask robber, as a result of utilizing our Flock technology. Most recently, one of the homicides that we had that occurred on County Street, Flock technology was instrumental in not only identifying the vehicle, but also showing that vehicle's path of travel to be able to help us identify additional evidence that will help us be able to make an arrest within that case and identify a suspect. Again, this is our technology at work, but again, when we talk about these conversations about things that we bring so far as technology, we cannot miss the part that these are things that are reactive. The deterrent thing starts at home. Deterrent thing starts at a point where someone has to take some responsibility for the child or the individual that you brought into this world. It is not the city's responsibility. It is not the police department's responsibility to raise your children. We want to be the police. That is our job. Our job is to police this city. As much as we like to interact with our public on community service, community engagement, our job is to be the police. We put violators in jail who break the law. Plain and simple. We're going to continue to service this community in the manner which this community has come to respect, expect, but we also need to get back to being the police, being mindful of going into a community, not being occupiers, but going into a community and working with our fellow citizens to address the issues and the crime that is in that community, within the rights of our constitution, and not to alienate anyone. And that is what we're doing, that is what I'm training my folks to do, and that is what we're going to do. As we move forward into discussions of crime, one of the things I wanted to highlight was our year 2021 to 2022 numbers. In violent crime, we had a 17% increase from 2021 to 2022 year-to-date versus this time right now, we're at a 1.9% increase. So, I highlight that because I want to show that the crime is actually not increasing, but slowing. Obviously, we have some challenges. The stolen cars we have going on right now are really driving our numbers. This TikTok videos and things of that nature are hindering us. The individuals that are leaving their cars running, key fobs in the car, please take them out. We are giving away locks for people's vehicles to deter these vehicles from being stolen. They're free of charge. Please come and get one. They're for Hondas and Kias specifically, because those are the ones that are being targeted. And I'll go through that slide a bit later. As it relates to 2021, 2022 numbers for property crimes versus our year this year, we're at a 27% increase from 2021 to 2022 versus our numbers right now standard a 2.9 increase. One of the things that's killing us is our larcenies. People are stealing like their minds are bad. Just so our individuals know, our Walmart had almost a $4 million shrink from theft. What happens if that store closes? You talk about a food desert, when so many people depend upon it because folks can't control themselves, and they go into these stores. And I'm not talking about individuals who are stealing to support their families. I'm talking about people who load up their shopping cart and walk out of the door and take it to the nearest local store for it to be resold. That's what we're talking about. We're talking about the ABC store on London Boulevard, which is the highest theft in the state. For Hampton Roads, Hampton Roads alone has the highest theft of larcenies from ABC stores than any other, all other entities combined. And we know that this stuff is going to our local bars and other bootleg establishments, and we're working with our ABC partners, state partners, to be able to stem this tide. But again, these are folks that are taking advantage of our current status of laws that have been weakened for whatever reason, and at this point, we're all suffering from it. Finally, a couple of things. You see our numbers total from 2021 to 2022, when you look, there's a 26% increase versus where we are year-to-date, a 2.87 increase. So, we are making progress. Again, this is not a story of doom and gloom. This is Portsmouth trying to turn the corner. I cannot go further without this, about talking about our recruitment, without our numbers. Right now, your police department has 98 vacancies. I don't highlight that for, but for one reason, we need police officers. We are trying. I've challenged every individual person within this department to recruit one person. I'm now challenging everyone within this city to find one person that you think would make a good police officer, someone that you would want to police your community, and refer them to us. Because we can't get out of this unless we get individuals who want to do the job, who want to be servants of this community. We're going to train them right. We're going to train them to uphold the law and to respect their fellow man, and if they can't do the job, they can go elsewhere. But we're only looking for the best and brightest. The Portsmouth Police Department will be the best police department in the state of The next slide, our calls for service. I highlight this because of one particular thing. On August 25th, 2023, we instituted mandatory overtime. We did this to be able to assist with some of the calls for service, but also give some of our existing patrol officers breaks. Now, let's be mindful, the breaks come from other officers, other detectives, other individuals who already have jobs that they're doing 40 to 60 hours on. So, they're, in addition to that, they're now being required to work in additional hours. And this is not just the officers. This is me, this is the captains, this is the lieutenants. Everybody is expected to work. But I highlight this because I want you to understand, within a short period of time, from two weeks prior to two weeks after, we've been able to cut, just by adding a few people to the ranks, to be able to answer a call for service, we've been able to cut most of our response times within half. We're talking about two individual, individuals added to each shift, we've been able to cut those calls in half. And I want to highlight the fact that when you look at our dispatch calls holding, this not, does not indicative of the dispatcher's holding the call before they dispatch them. There's several things that come into play there. One of them being supervise, the availability of officers that are not on call with the availability to respond, but also those calls that are priority, that the supervisor asks them to hold until we can get an officer that is available to respond to it. So, I want to make sure that everyone understands that. Under that is an example of what is considered a priority one call, two, three, four, and five. So, if you're an individual and you call with a priority five call that is a parking violation, please understand that a priority one or two is always going to push your call further down the line. We're looking at other ways to be able to address these calls that do not necessarily rise to that emergency criteria, whether it might be a phone call back from a police personnel or from a supervisor, or maybe being able to answer that call virtually. But we are working at looking at some alternatives to be able to address this. Again, I highlight the fact that we have, are addressing issues with our Hondas and Kias, and again, I'm encouraging citizens to, if you have a Honda, Kia fitting within that timeframe, please contact us. We'll be giving you a free steering wheel lock. We also hosted a bin etching earlier in August at IC Norcom, and we'll be doing another one. Again, these are deterrents for individuals to, hopefully, if something should happen to your vehicle, that we can be able to address the crime or be able to capture the individual responsible for it. On a better note, wanted to highlight our successful national night out that we had last month. Thank everybody who had the opportunity to attend. It was one of our better events that we did have. It was well-attended, well-supported by the citizens and the officers, and it is an opportunity for us to get together and remind each other that, one, the people who serve your community are human, just like you. We need your support, and we need your help, but also for our officers to understand that the people that need you most are your neighbors, are your fellow citizens, and you owe them a duty to respond and treat them with respect. I stand ready for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Chief. Councilman Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
First, I want to thank the
First, I want to thank the police chief for your presentation. I guess I, I guess I do want to apologize, maybe I was a little confused on what I really wanted when it came to this meeting. First, I want to say that the police department is doing an amazing job. They, they're definitely doing their part in making sure those who are doing the crimes, getting them off the street. But for me, and I've had this conversation, I wanted to see a more comprehensive thing and a comprehensive plan to actually deal with the crime. And that won't come from the police department. That will come from a lot of people involved. That wouldn't come from, well, first, too, I want to go to the point about, because it's going to come from the parents as well, but in a perfect world, it does start at home. But we don't live in a perfect world, and these children don't get to pick their parents. So we got to deal, do our part to help them with that. And what that being said, just because a kid is bad, he comes from a certain, well, not bad, just because he gets in trouble and do certain things doesn't mean the parent was bad. I've used my own example, for instance. My brother, who's my oldest brother, he went to jail, he sold drugs, he did crimes, he did certain things. I went to college, I'm on the city council. We chose two different paths, but we had the same mom. If you judge off my brother, you're going to say she was a horrible mom. You judge off me, you're going to say she was a good mom. So I want to make sure that we take that into consideration. But for me, I wanted to see a more comprehensive plan that included all departments when it comes to PRHA, when it comes to their communities, when it comes to planning, when it, it deals with clean and blighted communities up, when it comes to behavior health with mental health, when it comes to parks and rec with programs for our children, when it comes to EDA with living wage jobs, when it comes to city council and the city manager, we all play a part in this. So when it, when it comes to actually dealing with the crime, we need a comprehensive plan that's really going to deal with the issues that we face in this city as far as crime. I don't want the police department to, to take the blame solely for the crime in the city, because that's what's going to happen. Because they're going to read this and say, oh, we got shots, I mean, we got flop, we got this and that. They're going to say, but none of that's working, because people still dying. People don't really care about the stats when they see people in their face getting killed. And I know we always like to use the excuse, especially in this city, and say that, you know, it's happening all over Hampton Roads. For those of us who was born and raised in Portsmouth, who've been here, we know that this has been a problem for a long time in Portsmouth, way before it was in Hampton Roads or across the nation. So we, for me, I want to see a real comprehensive plan, and I think I probably wasn't silent in what I said that I wanted when I wanted to see this presentation. But I want to see something that, that everybody comes together and actually deal with all of the issues in this city so that we can really get a hold of the crime in the city. Because again, we can't arrest our way out of crime, nor can we prosecute our way out of crime. We have to deal with the root issues. When somebody gets shot, when somebody goes to jail, when somebody is selling drugs or whatever the case may be, the problem then started that day when they got caught, it started when they was able to choose that lifestyle. We got to stop them from choosing that lifestyle. So until we actually get a comprehensive plan that includes everybody, every department, city council, because city council is not excluded from this. I, I know people, I see posts, and sometimes the people say, well, they can't do it alone. You're right, we can't do it alone, but we need to also be a part of the solution to stop what's going on. So again, I don't want this to be, because I know you, you're the one that's presenting, so they're going to think that you're solely in, in charge of preventing the crime and stopping the crime. When I think of a crime plan, I think of everybody being included, a whole comprehensive plan. And I don't want one person, one group to take the blame, everybody should take the blame, and everybody should participate in the process. I have some more comments later, so I'll let somebody else talk.
If, if I may, real quick, just in response to that. So I agree 100% with what you just said, and that is what has not happened. The conversation continues to be, police department, where's the crime plan? That's what it's been for months. Where's our updated crime plan? So what I gave you was a crime plan from my vantage point, from what I'm able to deal with. At this point, the conversation has to come back to, every individual, as I said early, has a responsibility to sit down at the table. And we cannot, we cannot exclude the citizens who have opportunity to come and voice their concern or what they think should happen in regards to a crime plan. It again takes all of us to be able to sit down and put together this plan. It has not happened. I can't tell you why. If you're waiting on the city manager to do it, it's bigger than just that. Again, let's sit down and have the conversation, and stop dancing around this same thing over and over and over again. I might not have a job after this, I might be going too far, I get it, but I'm tired of coming up here. I want to be the police chief. I want to change this department. I know the responsibilities that we got, but I really want to sit down with people who have some real interests in what we're trying to do. The teachers deserve to be able to teach. We need to bring some real conversation to the fact. If we need to get surrogate parents and other things involved, then we need to do that. But it's not all about funding, because this is the thing, Portsmouth has plenty of programs that go unused. They go unused. So when are we going to sit down and have the conversation and bring all the people and say, hey, what can you bring away? Because I tell you what I bring, I bring jail. I'm sorry, we're, we're the police. That's my, that's my contributing factor to it. If you're an individual, I can show you compassion and say, hey, I know you got a drug problem, so guess what? I'll give you a pass today, but I need you to go and check into this treatment facility. The next time it happened, I might not take that same route. Now my level of helping you is to put you in jail. At least you're alive. Let's be honest in what we're asking individuals to do. I understand as a police department, we're the only entity that is awake 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So that broken street like the police department gets it. That mental call, the police department gets it. I need other folks to do their job, just going to tell you like that. Do, I need y'all to do your job. Everybody has a part to play in this. Take your piece back. Let us be the police. We can all work together, but when are we going to sit down and have a conversation? Because guess what? Every single time what happens, the police chief is the one that takes the dart, and guess who's the first one that goes? The chief and the city manager. I already know. I knew that when I came in. I'm just being honest. Excuse me, sir.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, thank you for the presentation and your willingness to tell it like it is, not standing up there giving us a bunch of political talk. And I think that's the way a police chief should be. One thing that's been left off that I haven't heard is, you know, there's a saying, if you do the crime, you should do the time. Unfortunately, let's be honest, since this is an honest, let's take the wraps off of everything, in Portsmouth, that's not necessarily the case. We, we've heard two instances this past week where people that shouldn't be on the street or on the street can only be two factors why they're on the street. One is incompetence, and one is you're soft on crime. But the fact is, two people who shouldn't be on the street are on the street. And that's, the prosecution, you can say all you, all you want to, the biggest deterrent from not doing a crime is you're going to have to do the time. We've got to get a handle on that. And that has to be part of the solution. I don't know if anybody's here from the Commonwealth Attorney's Office or not, but they should be. And if they don't participate, that's an important part of the equation. You can talk about a plan all you want to, if they're not included in the plan, and you folks in, in blue do your job.
Sir, what is, hold on, Mr. Moody. What is your point of order, sir?
I think before we go doing, saying those type of statements about...
I've got, I've got the floor, sir.
Mr. Moody, Mr. Moody, Mr. Moody, hold on, there's a call for a point of order. Let's hear the point of order, then I will make a rule.
Calm down, buddy. Before we, before we start saying who should be here, now, I think that we should make sure that we at least sent out the invitation to that person to, to be here in this meet. If, if we're, if we're saying that they should have been here, we should send out an invitation for them to be here and be included in the conversation.
Excuse me, excuse me, please, please, we, we have to maintain order in the chamber. First of all, this is an open discussion, and as such, the councilman was making comments, he is entitled to make his comment, and so your point of order isn't recognized. If you would please continue with your comments, sir.
Well, well, to begin with, I don't think you need an invitation. This meeting was well-advertised. I, I think, I think if you want to be part of the solution, you would be here without an invitation. That's my response to that. What I'm saying, I'm not beating up anyone, I'm just saying, the facts are the facts. We all heard and we all hear what's happening. I want to know if it's going to get better. You folks, and I'm speaking to the men and women in blue, you need the support of everyone, people on this dais, people who live in the community, the people who have the responsibility for their children, and the people, after you do your job, who are charged with taking it to court and seeing it to its end. So if that's, if all those pieces aren't in place, we're going to continue to have these meetings where we're talking about bad events, murders, car thefts, robberies. Chief, you mentioned Walmart. I happened to be in Walmart today, and I, I happened to run into you shortly after you left. One of the greeters there caught a person walking a, what appeared to be a pretty expensive bicycle right out of the door. Fortunately, fortunately, she stopped him, which could have been a bad situation. Fortunately, it wasn't. But you're right, Walmart, and we've all read it in other areas, fortunately not in Portsmouth or Hampton Roads right now, but big corporations are closing up retail stores because of theft problems. So we need to be extremely aware of that. But Chief, thank you. Speaking for myself, we, we, we support it, and I know everybody up here supports you and your department and what you do. So hopefully, next time you're here, be some good news to share with us. Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, our next speaker is Councilman Tillage.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, Chief Jenkins, for your presentation. I want to thank you and thank your men and women in uniform for all that you all do in our community. Without you, we would not be able to respond to crime, and I don't want you to ever think that this council is coming after you or your men and women in uniform. You made a comment in regards to people requesting updates on crime, and that is true. That is, that is very true. I think, however, it got lost in translation. You also made another comment in regards to how, basically, us as council need to do our job, and I wholeheartedly agree, it is past time for council to do their job. But I want to just, since we're having an open, honest, candid conversation, I want to be open and honest with you all. As council members, we are elected to serve the community the best way that we know how. We are elected to provide guidance, to provide finance, to vote on the budget, to also be able to set parameters for the city. When, in order to do that, meetings, as you say, have to occur. I've been requesting meetings on several topics since I've been on council. I've yet to have them. Then when we're talked about, when we talk about issues, we're told or threatened with we're getting involved in day-to-day operations. Crime is not a day-to-day operation. The citizens of our community are suffering, people are losing their life. I think it is high past time for council to have done something, but it takes a collaborative approach. And so with that being said, what I would propose, and I would hope this council would join in on this, is for us to initiate and to establish a crime and gun force task for, reduction task force. Because it seems as if Portsmouth has a lot of things going on. We, a couple, well, back in 2022, we had the Harvard Bloomberg study, scholar that was here, and in her findings, she did say that when, when you have high gun violence, more than, nine times out of 10 is out of your lower average income neighborhoods. So poverty does play a role into that, as well as lack of resources and opportunity. Ms. Santos, who's the city scholar, also said, I feel that Portsmouth is doing a lot, but not in a coordinated way. I've been seeing some overlap in what different city agencies are doing. I think that they could do better by joining forces. And so I think what we're hearing from the community is not that the police aren't doing their job, it is what are we doing to prevent crime? And prevention comes in with community, it comes in with city leaders, it comes in with non-traditional leaders, and mental health, healthcare experts. And I know that unfortunately, experts in consulting has become a bad word on council, but we need experts and consultants, consultants to be able to guide us to find these solutions. We have, unfortunately, high crime. You also may mention that policy, 50-year-old policies, well, we can't, we can lobby our state legislators, and I plan on doing that with gun violence, but what we need to do is start with city council. And so council, I would challenge you all that on this Tuesday, that we vote to establish a crime and gun violence reduction task force that will address the issues of bringing together all stakeholders to develop prevention initiatives, to build partnerships with civic leagues, government leaders, non-traditional leaders, experts, and by working together to combine law enforcement, prevention strategies, community engagement to address the root causes of crime. Because these statistics, I mean, you see a couple of reductions, you see some increases, but how do we reduce those? We reduce those by strategies, by us getting in and doing the work. And so, number one, if we can get that on the agenda, if we can have a consensus to have that to the agendas to establish that, but then also for us to have this meeting that is needed. And I think that all stakeholders need to be involved in this, this meeting, to include the police chief, the sheriff, city, members of city council, Commonwealth attorney, and I think if we had these conversations, which we have not had, I think we would be very surprised, but I think ultimately, I think we are getting in our own way of seeing success when it comes to reduction of crime. We've tried many efforts. Unfortunately, while we've tried them, they don't seem to be working. And that's not an attack on anybody, that's just, that's just one of those trial and error situations. But we need to be finding meaningful action to be able to address crime, because I think it was quoted in the newspaper that the city is doing all we can do. We're not. We're not doing all that we can do. We have mental health experts, we have healthcare experts, we have people that can connect young people to jobs, and everything else, we're not bringing it together. We've had groups that have come together, I've spoken to quite a few people that have been participants of these groups. They last for six months, they develop a plan, and the plan sits on the shelf. But yet, we're collecting dust, but yet we still have our men, our women, our children getting shot in the streets. And so I, so Mr. Chief, you are correct, it is time for council to get to work, and I'm urging my council to get to work right now. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief, for the excellent presentation, and thank you for your team members who are here. I know everyone on the police force couldn't be here, but I'm happy to see the ones that are here. But I'm a little disappointed that your team outweighs the citizen team. I had thought that we would have more participation from the citizens who have these concerns or who are pointing the fingers at us and you and everyone else to, to be a solution, but a lot of them are not here, but we're, we're moving aside from that. I had on my list that we need a call to action, we can't continue to do things the same way and expect a new result, so we have to do something different. I had on my list to establish a new boards and commissions group that would meet monthly or as frequent as the city council would deem for them to come up with solutions. or as frequent as the city council would deem for them to come up with solutions because we are elected and and a lot of us do have jobs or businesses and it takes a lot of time. It takes a lot of time to to be everywhere all at one time, just like it is with you and your team trying to erase, reduce the crime that we've seen. You know, we wake up, I wake up this week with a lot of this on my mind and I did speak with someone from PRHA because I just wanted to know, are there targeted areas? And it seems like a lot of times when we have violent issues or gun violence or or even homicides, they seem to be occurring in similar places. Dale's Home, we've heard a lot to to rise up. And what I've seen is that a lot of our sister cities in our Hampton Roads have eliminated or modified or revitalized their housing communities. And I asked why this one couldn't be revitalized as well, make it something new like we have Lexington Place and took down JDub is what we used to call it back in the day, but Jade Jeffrey Wilson was revitalized and we have new places and you put new restrictions on where, you know, they're required to only have the people who are living in there and when you see additional cars, you are addressing that. So we're going to all have to be vigilant. But I found out that Dale's Home was created, was the first housing project that was created in the city in 1941, three years older than my mother, you know, which puts that plus 78, 79-plus years, almost 83 years for this housing project. And why would we allow that? I recently had a citizen to call me and tell me that it's roach infested, that is there's problems. When they put in whatever it is to get rid of the the infestation, it just moves from one unit to the other. Why would we keep something like this for 80-plus years when we know that there are just other issues that are surrounded around it too? So that's just to say that that is all of us. Is is city council having a call to action that's going to be different from anything that we've seen before? And I think a boards and commissions commission will work where we have assigned people. It was what that we used to have, I remember when my neighbor down the street, Joe Wright, was living on the live and they had a police community relations, they had the little car that would ride through Cavill Manor and and just kind of oversee some things. I don't know if that's still an opportunity, but I think if we have a boards and commissions, they will come up with some things and they'll bring it back to us and we would have a liaison from the council who would be present to help oversee and bring that information back to the city council. Our civic leagues, we were having meetings with our civic leagues together because I mentioned when I first got elected that a lot of it, my own civic league meeting was being held on one of the nights when we were having Monday night meetings and we can't get around to all the civic leagues. So we did have a combined conglomerate of city civic leagues that were coming together and addressing some of these issues. So I think that, you know, when we make up this task force or this commission, that somebody from each civic league or at least one civic league needs to be on the commission and maybe that rotate, you know, every other year or something so that everything is being addressed, but we need to definitely do something different that we have. Have other comments too, but I'm not going to take up all of the time, but I applaud you for your your work, your presentation and and I like that you prefaced your comments with that, you know, it's not just a poverty-stricken issue, it's not just a parenting issue, it is a whole lot of things. And we did have a meeting at one time where we brought in someone from the FBI and someone from the sheriff and someone from your team and and a couple of us were together and maybe that needs to be an issue as well because we might not be able to do it all on our own, but we need to take some new steps that are different than the ones we've done in the past eight years since I've been on this council. So I yield my time and I thank you for you and your team's presence tonight.
Yes, ma'am. If I could, real quick, so on our city website, along with the police department website, is our 2023 crime plan that we put in place. One of the couple of things I wanted to highlight, one of the things you brought out is the fact that revitalization of neighborhood watch, that is part of the plan that we are trying to incorporate. Along with that is a state-supported gun violence initiative. As you know, that the state has committed to actually doing a GVI with us. We're trying to gain some support from some of the other jurisdictions, but regardless of whether or not they choose to participate, Portsmouth will be participating. From the GVI that is currently in Hopewell, they've that they put in place from last year, they've experienced a 75% reduction in shootings. And so we're hoping they bring that same model here to be able to combat some of the issues that we're having. I won't go back into the whole technology thing and we we beat that to death, but I will talk about that my request for to reconvene the multi-jurisdictional grand jury, that is going to be a part of the crime plan as well. In addition to the partnership with PRHA and HUD and their witness relocation program for individuals that is a cooperating witness for a a crime and we they're willing to cooperate in court, we have the ability ability to move that individual to another facility, another place to be able to hopefully ensure their safety, but also continue their cooperation. Additionally, the city has put in place some funding that went to the Commonwealth attorney in regards to witness protection, if you want to call it, for lack thereof. But that that is already been put in place and was put in place for the this year's coming budget. So initiatives have been taken place, have been put in place to be able to do some of the same things that citizens have asked for us. Some of it is lives within other people's houses to be able to to bring forth. Just a couple of quick things, real quick. When we when we put this together to be able to sit down and have a conversation or whatever, don't don't get me wrong, but I'm kind of tired of the conversation. Can we hold some folks accountable for doing their job? That's all. Just hold them, if you say you can bring this to the table, then bring it and then have someone be able to hold them accountable for bringing what you say you're going to bring. Because ultimately, I'm just telling you what happens and what has happened. It falls back in our lap. And I'm telling you, with the numbers that I have right now, I'm pushing away what we can't sustain. We need to get back to doing what we do. My folks signed up to be the police. There are plenty of things that we can offer and support, but when it comes to putting together a robust plan, yes, everyone needs to do their part and get involved and let's get to the lowest level and put some sound things in place, whatever the cause is. Let's rip the Band-Aid off at this point. Let's rip it off, let's do the things that we need to do, regardless of what it is. And I will say this, and I I mean, while I got the floor, the bigger ones got to stop. It's got to. It's got to. Right now, you are the best chance that we will ever have with moving this city forward. Take it in the room. Say what you need to say back there, but when you come out here, it needs to be a unified front. I'm not going to say you're not going to have a disagreement. I understand it. But we're the adults in the room. We're the ones mimicking the behavior. And it has to happen. And I don't want to go on another tangent. I'm just, again, I've been in, I love this city. You know, to be here in a city that sometimes don't love you, to be in a city where you stood over countless young boys, young girls, to tell their mothers that they passed away, that somebody's killed them. Many of you will never know what that feels like. For my folks to have to deal with this time and time again, you don't think we're tired? They don't know how that's going to manifest, whether it manifests in drinking problems, violence in the home, divorce, whatever the case may be, they still show up for work every single day. We need some help and we need folks to get involved and stop the talk. Let's put their egos aside. Either you're a part of the problem or you're part of the solution. That's where I'm at. I don't want to talk about it no more. I can retire next year. I'm, I can retire next year. The Lord put me here.
Thank you, Chief. Councilman Barnes, you have the floor, then Dr. Whitaker.
Me, I can, I I'm someone who can appreciate the the straight talk. I think I think it is, I said in the last meeting, I've said it probably 100 times since being on council, that I'm really just tired of the talking. I think one of the the issues, because I think I know the citizens care and I know they, this is a big issue. I see it all the time, I hear it all the time when I'm in the store, when I'm at my kids' game. So I know that they care. I don't think that determines whether they came to this meeting or not. I think that they're tired of the talking too and that's what we've always done in these meetings, so they probably look at that as, oh, they're going to, all they're going to do is talk about the crime, so I'm not showing up for it. But I think we we're at a time right now where we can really address this. I think I think we've heard from numerous of speakers when it comes to council meetings, when it comes to just today being on council, that we're really at a point where it's just time for action and let's talk. And I'm in agreeance with Councilman Tillage as far as the the task force. I think that is is overdue, it needs to be done. That was actually something that I was going to mention in my second go around, so I definitely am in support of that and I'm hoping we can get to that. But I'm hoping that everybody can be a part of the the comprehensive plan that comes out of that. And what I mean by that is that I don't want it to come back to council, I want council to participate in it. We don't, we don't need to just hear, there's some experts on this council that has been a part of things that's happening in the city. I always like to use myself because that's that's the great experience. I I heard somebody say that we, and and I don't want anybody to say this the wrong way, I'm not going at anybody or anything, I'm just talking from my experience. People say that you got to be tough on crime, that's going to stop people from doing it. So so I'll tell you about myself. When I was growing up, there's things that I did in the streets that I felt I had to do to take care of the things that I needed to take care of. I knew the consequences. I knew that I could go to jail. I knew what could happen, but I did it because the the responsibility that I had to me in that particular time in my life was more important than going to jail. This is why we really need to deal with the root causes of crime because they know if I if I do something, they can go to jail. They know this, but sometimes the circumstances that they have, the the lack of a a living wage job, so I have to go do something to make money. And that leads to a whole bunch of different other circumstances that one day may lead to somebody dying or getting shot, going to jail, whatever the case. Those are the things that we have to to stop to get into, to really prevent them from even having to choose that lifestyle. We need to make sure parents have good jobs. That's why the EDA piece was very important to me and I was kind of disappointed with the presentation because it didn't address those things. We need to make sure that we have good programs, legit programs in the city for our children. We need to make sure that our schools are taken care of, we need to make sure our police department is taken care of. We really need to deal with all of those issues and understand because a lot of us sit in our office or sit in our neighborhoods and we always think that we know what the issues are in these communities and why people are doing what they're doing. As somebody who is from those communities, who grew up in those communities, who was raised in those communities, who were raised with people who are from those communities as well, I'm telling you that your belief all the time may not be the issue. If you go talk to people and really understand why some of these things are happening, then we'll be on a better path to actually address the issues in this city. A a famous poet by the name of Sean Carter once said, we're not doing crime for the sake of doing crime, we're doing crime because we ain't living fine. And we have to change those circumstances so that our people can live fine and then we can really take a bite out of this crime.
I, sir, I can agree with you on a lot of what you said. Don't get me wrong, but I do know that there are, there are several opportunities that are currently in the city that, you know, at one point in time, you could get, the city was paying for you to get a CDL and we could barely find anybody that wanted to take advantage of it. I think the lowest-paying job right now at the casino is $18 an hour. And again, I'm I'm not saying that that's going to be enough to support a family, by no means. I just know that some of these same issues that we're talking about today, we've been talking about for years. My parents grew up in Out of Barber, that was their first home. Their second home was on Richmond Avenue before they bought their next home in Camelot. Again, I know plenty of people who've grown up under harsh circumstances, that that was not their their option. And so I just want to make sure that we're responsible in everything that we're saying. There has to be an accountability piece. Again, for the ones that want out, for the ones that want a better way, every program that we can think of, every program we we should throw at them, we should give them every opportunity that we can to be successful. We should make sure that our schools are the best, most vibrant and giving them everything that they need. But we also have to be plain, that there are some wolves in our community. And those individuals that, we've talked, you can't save every every individual and those are the individuals, we're talking about the individuals that are shooting people in our community, not talking about our folks that are struggling with addiction, not talking about the alcoholism, I'm not talking about the folks that are out prostituting themselves to be be able to get their next fix, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about individuals who loathe themselves and people look like them so much to the point that they will pick up a gun and fire at another person because you dislike what they say. We're not talking about fighting over gang territory today. We're not talking about fighting over drug territory today. We're talking about something that's on social media. We're talking about things like that. And so those things right there, I I don't know that those, a living wage puts that into perspective, but I'm not, again, I'm not the expert on that. I'm just, again, giving you my vantage point. I want us to be responsible for what we say and the things that we say. I don't want to give individuals a pass just because they grew up in a bad situation. We got plenty of examples, some of you up there grew up challenged.
100%.
And and you're still here. And so, again, let's just be honest in what we're saying because Portsmouth can do better and we need to do better and we need to hold individuals accountable. If you want help, we're going to give you help, but if you don't, we need to find something else for you. It's just that simple.
I think I think we're in agreeance when we say it is people in here who really need to, I mean, just go to jail to basically simplify it. But I also think that too many times in this city that we assume because we have a program that people know about it. And I've had that conversation with you. We don't do a good job of getting the information out to people. We think because we posted on Facebook and we got 1,000 friends, that all 1,000 friends and that's just not how it works. We got, we have to do a better job of getting that information out. So you said we had a program with CDLs and and we've had that conversation, you told me about that. I didn't know we had that and I'm pretty sure it was a lot of people who didn't know that we have it. So we we can't assume because we have a program that everybody knows. So we have to also consider that fact and make sure that we get that information out there. And the truth is, is that everybody doesn't want to be a a truck driver. So we have to have all different types of opportunities. I don't think that we're giving people a pass. What I'm saying is, is that, yeah, somebody going to shoot somebody, that's 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 horrible. But what I'm saying is, is that, and I've said this before and I and the meeting got shut down, but what we have now, what we're seeing in this city, is a is a combination of years and years of neglect when it comes to providing opportunities to our citizens, to our children, and now it's coming back to bite us in the butt. And this is why you see what you see. That's not, that's not taking anything away from the or giving anybody a pass, but we can't deny the fact that for years, we did, we we've had a lack of opportunity, a lack of living wage jobs, a lack of programs for you. We have a lot of programs now, but for years, we didn't have that. We had years of not fully funding our educational system, years and years. That just happened two or three years ago out of all these years. We can't deny those type of facts. So we we have to take everything into consideration and I and I really respect the 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 conversation that's being had tonight, especially coming from you, because one of the things I tell anybody, please make sure that you're honest, open and honest about what you what you feel and what you say. Don't don't sugarcoat it because some issues can't be sugarcoated. Don't, don't sugarcoat it, because some issues can't be sugarcoated. But I just think that we gotta make sure that we consider all the facts and we make sure that we not make excuses, but we don't forget what hasn't been done in this city.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Chief, I wanna thank you for, uh, the presentation information. I think you know, uh, as well that the position which you hold and the people, um, for which you oversee and work on a daily basis, Police Department, they respond to crime. And so I really don't come to these meetings, and we've had a lot of these meetings where it's just, uh, law enforcement involved. And no solution is gonna come because law enforcement is not a solution. It responds to crime. Each of those statistics that you showed us, there was not a police standing there. Police responded to those situations. And so I understand the fervor and the emotion. And I think that we need to realize that it's really, and historically, it really has not been the Police Department. When you go back to the slave patrol, okay, controlling, when you go back to the northern immigrants working, in fact, the Texas Rangers, none, none of those were really concerned about uplifting communities. It was controlling communities. And so that culture still exists, but that culture is not the only one that is, uh, causing what we are seeing today. And it's a burden that you have inherited a culture, not just within the Police Department, but when we look at what's happening in Portsmouth and around the country, you can't ignore the fact that this country was created out of a culture of violence. And then you expect to come here twenty twenty-three when that has not been addressed properly and expect, uh, for things to fall in line? You made a statement, uh, you said that about Walmart, people are stealing like their minds are bad. Well, we were told by the Public Health Director a few years ago that when you keep people in impoverished situations and neglect, which we've seen in this city, that it does lead to brain development issues. And so you can't just ignore, as Councilman Barnes mentioned, you can't just ignore the neglect that has taken place. And I know you made a statement at the beginning. I don't think you were trying to be overarching with it. I think you qualified it by speaking to the recent death that occurred, um, there in Dale's Home. You said it wasn't about poverty, wasn't about education. I hope you're not overarching that because what we see out here today, the neglect, there are more people, according to Columbia University research, there are more people who are dying from poverty every day than crime. And so I just wanna say it, it's, it's, the talk, the talk is cheap because we're not talking about anything that's going to elevate socioeconomic conditions. When you start talking about the wolves out here, which wolves are you talking about? Are you just talking about the wolves that are out here shooting? Does that also include these wolves who go out here as bankers and take people property? City economic developments that neglect minorities and contracting? Are you talking about the wolves in this city that have taken black folks' property and denied generational wealth? Okay, so we're gonna talk about the wolves. Let's include all of them in the pack. You see, and so I'm just saying that this issue is bigger than just the police. And the police is not going to be the solving entity, which I know you know. And until we are willing to address the socioeconomic conditions seriously in our city, then all the talk becomes sounding brass and tingling cymbals.
Yes, sir. I, I agree with you.
Thank you, sir.
I agree with you one hundred percent. There, there are many, uh, many issues that lend us to this problem. Here's the thing. Every single time, the police chief is the one that stands and takes all the darts for some of those things that he or she has no control over. A lot of those things that you highlighted, we have no ability to be able to affect.
That's right.
We only are able to affect from our end and offer whatever expertise that we may have.
That's right.
The mere fact that I have to send my officers out to take forty or fifty hours of critical response training to be able to deal with mental health and somehow think that that qualifies them to be able, a mental health provider, be able to talk or de-escalate a situation is asinine. Meanwhile, we have qualified individuals who should be able to do that, and that we're encouraging them to be able to do it. At first, we kinda laughed at it, but I tell you what, as you think about it now, we need them. When we talk about these other situations that have gone on neglected for years, and I'm very conscious about what law enforcement has meant to our community. I'm very conscious of that. And anybody that's within our organization will tell you about the cultural change that I continue to push. Again, it's not about us going into community being occupiers or going in to try to keep a control about one individual. It's about us being partners with the individuals to better their community. It's about how we treat individuals when we go out. But again, I'm standing here today answering a conversation about crime, and we've all agreed that at some point, this is a bigger conversation. So I ask, what is the solution? Because we keep talking about it. What's the solution? And if somebody has it and you haven't been sharing it, shame on you. Because at this point, we all need to say enough is enough. We shouldn't have another meeting like this until we have a situation where we can sit down and put some professionals in the room, whether we get the best and brightest or whomever, to sit down and look at what issues can we address? What issues that we have, and how do we get there? And then put together a strategic plan to get us there. It's bigger than just talking about it. It's about putting together a roadmap on how we get to where we go. How do we get where we're going? It literally is putting together a thirty-day, ninety-day, sixty-day, where we're going. And then hitting those benchmarks, and if we're not able to hit them, then at least we know we're close and we can pivot on some of those things. But it's not happening. We've only been talking about this for years. We've only been talking about it for years, and that is why I say, what I said, when it's time to get enough of this, enough of it, what, let's put together the petty differences. I, I'm willing to work with anybody who's willing to work with me. I'm not gonna minimize myself. I promise you, I'm not gonna do that. I wasn't raised that way. But I will work with anybody who's willing to work with me on how we address this issue. If you wanna find me, I might be on the side avenue, sitting in my lawn chair or at the B P station with my table set up. We can have a meeting there. Let's take it to the streets. Let's get out there and see some of these conversations. I really encourage, and this is what I, this is what I would like to happen. I'm gonna ask you one thing from me, from the Police Department. I would like to meet with each and every one of you at least once a quarter. To sit down, I don't care where we go, whether we have a couple cough or whatever the case may be, but I wanna find out, because you talk to your constituents, the people who vote. I wanna find out how we can do, what are we missing? If we're missing something, or something happened, don't wait till it goes wrong. I wanna try to get ahead of it. But I need to talk to all of you when we have, before we get an issue, on how we improve. And if that's not happening within all parts of government, then we're missing something. This, this is it. So again, I, I don't know what else to say.
Chief, the, this response to the, I, I understand, you know, the, the meeting and it, it has to go beyond just talking. There, there has to be structural change that's gonna take place that changes the quality of life for people. I just said, it's not gonna be something that you're gonna solve.
I get it.
Um, it, it's gonna have to involve, it has to involve a vision of changing the whole edifice that you have structures in place. These things you're seeing happen in today didn't just start in twenty twenty-three. So it has to go beyond just conversation, but policy's gonna have to be changed and how we do things in educationally and economically to reach people. And unless we're, unless we're doing that, then we can have all the task force we want. But if we're not changing the conditions of persons' lives and their socioeconomic conditions, you're just gonna keep seeing the cycle repeat, which you know for yourself, crime is on a cyclical basis.
I get it, sir. I, I do. I'm, I'm just volunteering my, whatever I can get at this point, you know?
I think you're sincere. I think you're giving your all.
Councilman Hugo, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor, and thanks, Chief, for your, uh, passion tonight. Clear that you care. It's clear that you care about your team, and it's clear you care about the city. Uh, we've heard non-agenda speakers over and over in the time that I've been sitting up here who have displayed similar passion. And I think to your point and to the point of, uh, what, what my colleagues have made, we, we, we don't have a comprehensive plan that shows all of those passionate people where they fit to work together, to collaborate, to bring their gifts, uh, into the discussion and fit in with all of the other gifts that, uh, that, 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 uh, that frankly we have and, and that people are doing stuff, uh, but they're not doing stuff, uh, enough stuff targeted at this problem. Figuring out how to help parents be parents, figuring out, uh, where the, what the role of the civic leagues are, what the role of our churches are, our grassroots organizations, our mental health professionals. I mean, uh, we, we have experts in, in, uh, in all of those areas. And so, uh, so, Mr. Mayor, I, I, I wanna echo the, the comments here from, from, uh, from my colleagues. I think it is time that we, uh, put a structure in place, call it a task force, call it what you want to. Uh, but I think the chief's exactly right. Whatever it is, it needs to be a, a task force that is tasked to get things done, that we follow through and regularly visit what that group is doing and, and, uh, and measure ourselves against progress. There, there's a role for each of us on city council in that, I think, because there are areas, I think, in this task force. There's, there's work to be done on jobs. There's work to be done on schools. There's work to be done on mental health. There's work to be done on public safety. And everybody up here has a little bit different gifting that may align to, to each of those areas. And so my suggestion to you is that we spend some time as a council figuring out what role each of us needs to play in the areas inside this effort so that we're accountable to each other and can make sure that, that the, the experts that we're talking about bringing together have the, 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 the resources of the city behind the effort so that we can get stuff done and make a difference. So thanks for bringing it out tonight. Appreciate your candor and your courage.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Barnes?
I'm, uh, I'm gonna be real short, but I just want you to, to understand, as I said in the beginning, I don't want you to, all the citizens to, to, um, think that the crime only falls on you. You're a, a, a piece of it, but council's a part of it, P R H A's a part of it, economic development's a part of it, schools, everybody, there's a lot of people that's a part of it. And that's what a lot of us are saying. We want, we want to be a part of it, and we want a comprehensive plan to actually finally deal with the crime in this city, to prevent it and to stop it so that it can make you guys, your job, a lot easier.
Thank you, sir. And Chief, before you sit down, you know, I've been listening intently. And one thing I want to make very clear for you and your team and all of the citizens, you guys have been on your watch and you've been doing your job. And I'm grateful for the leadership that you have displayed along the way and, and those who have engaged in this process of gun violence reduction. To your point, it's not a new phenomenon. If you recall, and many of you in this room, when we started dealing this one, when Anna was elected as mayor in twenty twenty, we saw a spike in gun violence. And many of you came before council with some recommendations. The manager at that time began working on a comprehensive plan. In addition to that, as mayor, I called a group together, if you recall. And in that group, we called law enforcement, fire, we called every stakeholder behavioral health. We called the organizations Give Back to the Block. Mr. Redmond, we called seven five seven Stop the Violence. We called CUTS, organization, which stands for Cleaning Up the Streets. We also called our ministers to the table in those meetings. And it was a Gun Violence Reduction Strategy Task Force that was created. And so the truth of the matter is that, that, that's not a new phenomenon. However, what, what came out of those meetings was the collaboration of organizations. First, we needed to get to know one another, right? Because as you recall, there were a number of organizations in the room that didn't know what each other was doing. So the first, the first job was to make the connections of what everybody could do, perhaps, to impact this gun violence. As the mayor, I traveled to different places, and I joined the National Mayors Against Illegal Guns, brought back a lot of information, and we shared that information with our group. And as a result, we were able to build those organizations and collaborate with Give Back to the Block, seven five seven Stop the Violence, and other organizations to this day, who are still working with the Police Department and other stakeholders to create a greater awareness and reduce gun violence. We have been vigilant, and we have been at the table. The truth of the matter is, as I have often shared, when we put in the Safe Neighborhood Program, you remember that?
Yes, sir.
And when we brought the F B I and law enforcement, when the state Public Safety Director of the state of Virginia came to the city of Portsmouth, who was in that meeting? The Commonwealth's Attorney. You recall, chief?
Yes, sir.
The Commonwealth's Attorney and all the stakeholders in this city was at that meeting at your administrative building. And at that meeting, based on the interaction of all those departments, dollars were pledged to the city of Portsmouth to help in that effort to reduce gun violence. And we continue to be vigilant about it. Honestly, at the end of the day, we do need to have a better, continuous collaborative effort in terms of following up with one another. We have a list, a database of all those entities and all of those individuals, so we don't need to recreate a task force. What we need to do is what you recommended. I like the idea of one, where we start as a council, you getting us all up to date, and then we perhaps reconvening that group together and understanding what we want and bringing that group together. Because I, my, my vision for that, it was born out of, we need to connect with the community in a better way. But as we build those relationships, folks, to, to, to Councilman Barnes's point, talk to the Parks and Recreation Director. We gave out information of the programs that the Parks and Rec Department had on, 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 on the list. We also connected other entities together. So I, I, I like the idea of continuing to move forward. We do have a plan. It, it probably needs to be looked at again because that's what a plan is. You should revisit it continuously. But to your point, we are here to do the work. I'm out in the community, certainly supporting those efforts on a daily basis, as many of my colleagues are. But we will continue to be vigilant in that. I like the idea of, of meeting one-on-one. First, for us to get the understanding, and then council, perhaps, reconvening in how we wish to proceed, and then bringing all those stakeholders on the list back to the table and adding any new stakeholders that may be, um, helpful in us coming out with a better plan to reduce the gun violence. But in closing, I, I wanna say to everybody, gun violence, violence in general, is a responsibility of everyone in the community, reducing, paying attention. It is a shared responsibility in us being our brother's keeper and watching out for our neighbors. When we see something, we say something. You know, the, the, the interesting thing about, about a lot of things that occur, if we, if we see it happening, if we see that young person with a firearm in our house, if we see something happening, perhaps we can do something to impact that before it even gets to the point that it becomes an act of violence on anyone. And so I would just encourage you and your team, chief, and all of those who work in law enforcement, to continue to do your job. I appreciate the effort that you put forth and your team of, of officers every day in our community, and, and I'm grateful. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Councilman Tillich, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, sir. I think, Mayor, you, you made some-
I think, Mayor, you made some really good points. There was a task, well, a group that you did put together some time ago. And you had some organizations that were apart, and I've spoken to a lot of those people that were apart. And their words to me were, what happened to it? It's gone. It's not there. We met for six months. The plan is now on the shelf. When I made that comment, that's what I was referring to. We need something, and you said, we need something that's continuous, something that's ongoing. We need a, as Vice Mayor Lisa Lucas Burke mentioned, we need a board and commission that is permanent to address these issues and to make recommendations to council. We don't need, I mean, I think I've heard one, two, three, four of my colleagues up here, well, five, mentioning how we don't have a comprehensive plan, that we need to be working towards it. We're trying to work towards it, but then we're shut down by that comment. So, I would recommend, and I would urge my council colleagues to join me in establishing this permanent board on crime and gun violence reduction so that we can get this city going forward when addressing crime and violence. Our citizens are tired of waiting. I'm tired of waiting. People cannot continue to wait and wait to have one-on-one conversations. We're having meetings every Tuesday. I went, I mean, every other Tuesday, I went and quoted to the newspaper the other day. Business, the city business does not stop just because it's not Tuesday. We have to keep going regardless. And so, council colleagues, if we can have a consensus to start, because people, they didn't come here today to listen to us bicker. They didn't come here to listen to statistics. They came here to listen to what is council going to do. And so, what we need to do is do this to begin the process that we can work towards strategies and solutions. We are the council. It ends and stops with us. And when it comes to accountability, when we say what we want and it's not being done, we hold people accountable. And that's what we need to do. And so, I'm urging you all to let's do something tonight. Let's move in the direction of having a permanent crime and gun violence reduction task force or committee, whatever words you want to use, to help save the lives of these children. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief.
Can we have a consensus?
We have a closed session item. Please put.
Point of order?
Please, 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 please read the closed session matter.
You have to acknowledge my point of order.
We, we, please read the closed session.
So, you're not going to acknowledge my point of order?
Your point of order is not acknowledged.
You have to acknowledge it, sir.
I'm sharing with you. Please, 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 this, this.
Madam Attorney.
As I, this is not, hold on, hold on.
You have to hear what it is.
Hold on, hold on. State your point of order.
My point of order is, I ask for a consensus. You just completely ignore it. We have members of council who have said they support that, and because it's not something that you want to do, Mayor, you are trying to overstep it. We, I ask for a consensus. If the consensus fails, sir, it fails. But I'm asking for a consensus on council to move forward with this gun violence reduction task force.
Sir, your point of order is not recognized.
I move that, I move that council, I move that council overrule the mayor's decision. I move that council overrule the mayor's decision.
We have a motion on the floor.
Second.
Excuse me. We have a motion on the floor. We please take a vote. By show of hand.
We got a vote, right?
And this is the, this is the.
We can vote.
Overruling the mayor's decision.
This item is adopted. Five to.
Thank you. So, I would like to call for a consensus for council to move forward with adding this to our item, agenda item on Tuesday. And I will work with Attorney Grant Williams and Madam Clerk to draft the language for that to be presented to you all later this week. Thank you.
Right. On that request, there still needs to be a consensus. However, Mr. Moody, because we already have a task force in place, so we don't need to be redundant. We can move.
I'm asking for a board and commission, sir.
Sir, you are out of order. You do not have the floor.
I'm not out of order.
You do not have the floor.
What's out of order is us not acknowledging these deaths.
Sir, you do not have the floor. Please. You do not have the floor. I just called you out of order. You don't have the floor. We already have a task force in place. If there's language which we want to work on as a council, we can move forward with working on language. But we do not need to recreate a task force that's already in place. You don't have the floor, so.
You're ignoring my consensus.
You don't have the floor, sir.
You're ignoring my consensus again.
What I'm sharing with you is, you don't have the floor right now.
And I'm sharing with you that you're ignoring my consensus.
Oh, I'm not ignoring.
You are because it's the question. You haven't let the question be asked.
Because what I'm trying to share with you, we already have that in place. And once again, you know, sir, this is not a one-upmanship here today. I'm trying to give you an opportunity to say what you need to say, but if you want to be argumentative, we're not going to get forward.
I move, I move again that council overrides the mayor's decision to not allow the consensus to go forward.
That's not the way we operate.
Right, right, right. And just like I said, I'm, go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. Where we are right now, the mayor is giving a discussion before he gives the councilman his opportunity to restate the consensus for vote. So, what he's doing is putting together the different viewpoints. He's then going to ask the councilman to state his own consensus and then take the vote.
I appreciate, I appreciate your summary, but that's not what just occurred. We need to just go ahead on and vote on the consensus.
If we could just give the councilman the opportunity to restate his consensus, given the comments that the chair has tried to consolidate.
So, what I'm asking for is that consensus be given for us to have an agenda item placed on this Tuesday's agenda to vote on, to whether or not to have a board and commission on crime and gun violence reduction. And that I will work with Attorney Grant Williams and Ms. White, the clerk, to draft the language that will be presented to council prior to Tuesday's meeting.
Thank you, sir. And with that, with that, with that, we will open the floor up for discussion. And Mr. Moody, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I thought a few months ago, maybe earlier this year, that we had decided as a council not to operate off the seat of our pants. And by throwing a consensus, a question for consensus, and I'm not saying whether that's good or bad, but it gives the public the impression that we're responding in the heat of the moment with something that's not fully thought out, maybe, may end up being the best thing in the world. But it looks like a knee-jerk reaction to some heat that the city is putting on this council to do something about crime. Now, just think back. We've reacted in light manner every time the issue of crime comes up in this city. We do about the same thing. And in fact, as I sat here tonight, I heard some of the same language. To me, it's placating folks that want to see some action. What they want to see is not going to be a short-term deal that a task force that this council forms is going to solve it. Because the solution's not going to be necessarily within that task force. They may come up with some good ideas, but they're not going to solve crime. Not going to do it. And at the heat of the moment, to do this in a knee-jerk fashion, I think is awful. I think it paints us. If the next group comes up here with something they want done, we're going to, we're going to form a task force, every problem that we have in this city? I don't, I don't think that.
Ma'am, you have been outbursting this entire meeting. Now, the public, we have to keep order in the meeting. If you continue to have public outbursts, I'm going to have you removed. Is that clear? Okay, because we can't, this is, this is the chamber, and we must have order. I've allowed you to do it, and I haven't said anything, but he is talking. He has the floor. Okay? Thank you very much.
I'm not going to drag it out. I just think we're going about it that if it's, if it's a good idea, let's talk about it and put it together in a well-thought-out plan as far as what the, what's the end game with this task force or with this commission? Is it going to be a task force? I've heard both tonight. Is it going to be a boards and commission? Is it going to be a board? Is it going to be a commission? Or is it going to be a task force? Everything is flying around, and if I was sitting out there, I wouldn't have the warm and fuzzies that this is just more political reaction to a serious problem. So, that's all I got to say about it, Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not really sure how we even got to this point as far as the disagreement that occurred, but I don't think this is a knee-jerk reaction. Crime has been a big issue for years. You've been on council for 25 years, and it's been a part of every year you've been here. So, this is not a knee-jerk reaction, and I, I don't, I'm not trying to insult anybody. Don't take it as that. Please don't. Please don't. But what I'm saying is that it's not a knee-jerk reaction. We really haven't had a, well, okay, let me stop. From, we did have a comprehensive plan last year for a little bit of time, but then that was thrown out. It was called Rock the Block between, I think it was August and December. It was a comprehensive plan that included everybody. That's how I'm putting this part. You got lights and certain things of that nature that was done by the last city manager. But for 50 years, I know at least for 35 years, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm a little older than that. 37 years, we have not had a comprehensive plan. It's been a, it's been a, crime has been an issue every year of my life. Every year of my life. I've been in TJ's that was out south side and seen somebody get shot in the back of the head with a shotgun as a kid. I've seen so much, and crime has been a part of my life all, every single year of my life. So, this is not a knee-jerk reaction. I'm not sure how we got to a point where we, where we fussing about this. I think the goal is to stop crime, and I think that the goal is to have a comprehensive plan that really deals with the crime. And I think this gets us somewhat to that situation because we have to get people to the table that actually understand what's going on there and put a plan on the table. And it can't just include, because, Mayor, I was on that, that task force that you were, that you were talking about, and it didn't include a lot of people that need to be at the table. EDA needs to be at the table. PRHA was at the table. Behavioral health needs to be at the table. They wasn't at the table when I was there. And I'm not trying to go back and forth, but I'm just saying, there's a lot of people that need to be at that table, and it need to be a plan coming out of all city departments of how to deal with their part of the crime issue, not just the police department. Every time we hear the word a crime plan, we think it comes specifically from the police department. But that's just the part when it's time to deal with the circumstances of the crime. When somebody get killed, now they come, that's their part. But we have to deal with the prevention standpoint of it, and that's where city council comes into play. That's where department heads comes into play. That's where the city manager comes into play. Nobody's blaming it on one person. We're blaming it on all of us because we all haven't sat at the table to actually deal with the issue. But to say that this is basically a knee-jerk reaction to it, it's not because it didn't start on September the 19th, 2023. It started, I can, I can only speak for 37 years of my life. And for 37 years of my life, Portsmouth has been a crime-ridden city. So, I don't see how anything is a knee-jerk reaction to this. And I don't see how we can illustrate it as that. I think we really need to take a real positive look at this. I think it could be something that could really benefit the citizens. And I think the citizens in here today, at least this is not the majority of the citizens, but none of them are confused. It don't look like none of them confused. It look like they want it. So, I think that's a positive avenue. I think it's something that we need to look at. But I just don't understand how we got to a point where we were fussing about this. I thought it looked like we were on the right path. I want to be on the right path. I think ultimately, we want to see less and less crime, and we want to make sure we fix the issues in the city, and we want to see a better Portsmouth.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Hugo, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, I think we all agreed that we want and need a comprehensive plan. I think the only disagreement that I'm hearing is that your suggestion, Mr. Mayor, is that we resurrect the effort that started working on that a while back. And Councilman Tillis' recommendation is that we, we stand up a new committee or commission. Whether we do one or the other, seems we could build on top of something that's already in existence. And if we conclude quickly that there aren't the right people on it, then we put the right people on it. And if we need to turn it into something permanent, we turn it into something permanent. But tonight, we just need to agree to hitch up our boots and get going. And we already got something in place. Let's resurrect it and get moving.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I brought up the comment about the board and commission because I felt like that would have more oversight with council. And I understand that there was a task force before, and I mentioned it in my comments. But I think that the group was too top-heavy. I think that we need some citizens who are right in the trenches. And I've had a couple people that text me, citizens, who said, hey, I want, I want to serve on, on the commission. And I think that we need some of those subject matter experts to be the persons who come and talk to the everyday citizens. It may be a report out from the FBI. And then we might have something from the Commonwealth attorney, or we might have something from the sheriff or the police department. But I think the task force that we had, we saw just one day, and then we didn't see anything else with it. So, however we get moving, I think we need a call to action. That was the first comment that I made, when I made my comments, when the chief was making his presentation. And we can't continue to do things the same old way and expect a different result. We got to do something different, and I think we have a majority of council's members who want to move in that direction. And even if we just save one community, or one life, or two students, or, you know, get three guns off the street, then we will have done something. But I think that the community wants to see us do something. This council wants to see us do something. And I think we will be effective if we move in a direction of a boards and commission, or a task force, or whatever we want to call it. I think the old task force was top-heavy, and I think we need to incorporate some more citizens who are going to have eyes and real-life experiences that they can bring to the table to help us to effect some changes. And just for the record, since we have this being recorded, as far as Portsmouth being the highest city with alcohol, the ABC stores that are being robbed, they're going to have to do something too, different too. I mean, if they have to put bars around the alcohol, if they're going to have to have people to go up to the touch string like you go at Wawa and pick that you want a bottle of Crown Peach or whatever it is that you want to get, then, then, you know, we have to do something different. And I'm just saying, we as a council can't continue along the same way because I believe, I feel like if we leave this council meeting today with the task force that was in place and we leave here, that's going to be the end of it, and we won't hear anything else. So, I think we need to erect something else today. And if we could get a consensus to move forward, then I think that we should do that.
Councilman Tillis, you have the floor.
I think Vice Mayor Lucas Burke summed up everything I wanted to say. I think I've said enough. I think the citizens have said enough. And I'm hoping that council will react in a positive direct, in a positive action because this is not a knee-jerk reaction. It can't be a knee-jerk reaction when it's something that's been going on for years. And, you know, it's time that we find solutions. I think a board and commission is great. I've spoken my piece. So, now it's up to you, my colleagues, to decide what you want to do.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
I'll stick to my comment that's knee-jerk, but, you know, I'll, by what council does, I will say this. I think the citizens are looking from us to do more than do something. They're looking for some results. And we've been down this similar road before. I'm very pessimistic of the results that, and the effect that. Uh, I'm very pessimistic of the results, uh, that, and the effect that it will have on crime. I hope I'm 100% wrong about it. But, uh, uh, you know, more meetings and 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 more deliberation, that, I'm not certain that's the solution. I will say that, uh, that we, we need some outside support that would be on this task force, whether it's the, the former task force or the new task. We, we got a battle of the task forces here. Uh, we, we got the, we, we, we got the old task force, and we got the new task force. So, maybe we can meet in the middle. Uh, but in meeting in the middle, I think we have, we need some new task force members, quite frankly, that are versed in in law enforcement, number one. Uh, uh, the sheriff, as far as I know, recall, uh, he had FBI experience, so I would think that, uh, he should be definitely part of that. And and I got a feeling he could probably make some recommendations, and I know the chief, uh, can make some recommendations. Uh, beyond that, I I don't think it should be any of the, uh, uh, same members of the task force, uh, maybe augment, uh, the the members of that. But, uh, to do the same old thing, whether you call it the, the new task force or the old task force, I think we, I think the citizens is going to be very disappointed with it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor.
Yes, sir, call for the vote. Call for the consensus vote.
We'll call for the vote.
Uh, the vote on the floor would be Councilman Tillage's request for this council to include on the agenda at the next council meeting, which would be the 26th of September, a creation of a task force for violence and gun reduction in collaboration with the city attorney's office and the city manager's office to decide what that task force would look like and present to council at that time.
Councilman Moody.
Gun reduction, what, what, uh?
Gun violence reduction.
Crime and gun.
Violence, but not, not gun reduction.
No, so, crime and gun violence reduction. And that doesn't have to be the name, but that's the purpose of the.
Okay. Okay.
The, the committee, the board.
With that amendment, crime and gun violence reduction.
Yes.
Now it's time for the vote, please.
You can vote now. This item is adopted seven zero.
Thank you. We do have a need, that, I think that concludes the discussion for this evening. We do have a need to go into a closed session. So, Vice Mayor, if you would please read the closed session motion.
Yes, I will. I move to go into a closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Subsections 2.2 dash 3711, A.1 and A.29 for the purpose of discussing and considering the process fulfilling the position of city manager and discussing the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds to executive search firm, where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body.
We have read the motion, we have a second.
Second.
Please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
We are in closed session, thank you all for coming.
I hereby move that each council member certify that to the best of his or her knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed session was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting just concluded.
Would you please vote electronically?
This item is adopted seven zero.
That concludes our, our closed meeting, and the meeting is adjourned. Take care.